I went on the first time. What's first, huh? Public Works第一位?
Okay.
Public Works is first.
Yep.
Okay. I have forty, which detail, which is a breakdown. And then we start with DPW administration. We have no minutes yet, so we're all sit there. We'll get them when you get them. Mayor, you have anything beyond the agenda?
We have plenty. We are overloaded.
Rayma, we will call on you when we get to Culture Recreation and Libraries, okay?
That's fine.
Do you mind waiting?
Oh, no.
We have to deal with Public Works first.
Now, this is a beautiful view.
Okay, good.
And Rayma, you're welcome to the table too if you want to, you know, put your things down. You don't have to sit against the wall.
I don't mind sitting here.
I can sit with the adults. Oh, wait, or us.
What are you talking about, Joe? Hi. DPW Administration. This is supervisors, like Highway Supervisor, is this?
No, that's us in the office.
All Office plus Joe?
Nancy Thomas.
We have to pick who? It's nice.
What do you guys say?
How many supervi- how many supervisors we talking? Four?
No, this is nothing for supervisors. This is just our office, so it's Joe, myself, and the two admins.
It just says Supervisory there, that's all.
That's you and Joe together.
That's me and Joe together in one line, and the other two are the two admins.
Yeah. Got it. Got it, got it, got it, got it. Just so we're, I'm on DPW Administration, that's what we're talking about. Everybody's on the same page.
That's where we are.
Any questions on that? I have no questions. Minor increases in salaries. Next one is DPW Fuel account. Fuel pays for everybody, including Fire?
Correct.
Police, everybody. You dropped at eight thousand, is that because you don't expect the, expect the price to be lower? Karen, Joe?
Yes.
Patty? Okay.
Is this another example, Melissa, of moving from one bucket to another? The miscellaneous professional and technical went ten to two to eight.
No, they ask for the, it to be budgeted that way. Last year, it was budgeted less for technical. This year it's budgeted, it's actually, you know, pretty level budget, but eight thousand is what they ask for professional and technical services and thirty thousand for gas, you know, actual fuel.
One went down, one went up.
Yep.
And why is that pay? Your opinion is up?
Well, they're the ones that prepare those, the requests. Joe and Patty put together the request as to what they want and what they, what they think they need, so.
No, I, I thought she was going to explain to me the difference between.
Yeah, did you have the two new with the, the new gas?
The new system.
Gas system.
Well, we're looking to do a new maintenance for the, all the vehicles.
Oh, okay.
Maintenance tracking.
Maintenance tracking, and we're going to hook it to the gas system so that the mileage will come in. Every, all the guys now down there have to do everything by hand.
Okay.
So, if anything's been forgotten, we're trying to get a, a system in.
And it sounds, this sounded, this was something that sounded really beneficial to the city. And, you know, even through our, our minor insurance program, they advise you to have regular maintenance schedules instead of these guys trying to do it on their own. That way they would all just, you know, pull up and be easily accessible to everybody. Instead of just figuring out when you need to do each vehicle yourself.
Moving on, DPW Engineering. The engineer salary.
Are we getting new engineer?
Yes.
I do.
Sam Burkey started.
Right. He's been here this fiscal year, but.
He gets a cellphone.
We had, we did have, you probably remember Peg that we did have one that retired.
Yeah.
You know, after many years of service. Years of very good service.
Generation.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, he does get a cellphone.
Yeah.
Yes, and, um.
Call them constantly.
And he's, um, so far, a huge benefit to the city. His name is Dan. Dan Murphy.
Anybody named Dan is a good guy.
There you go.
I don't know if that's true. Second.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Okay, all in favor? All right, moving on to DPW Highway, unless anybody has questions on that one. How many people in Highway now?
Eight.
And that's still down from a long time ago.
We did add one.
We did add one.
They had one last year, right?
Years ago, we had nine.
We're getting there. Unfortunately, we're not adding another one this year, but we are waiting.
So, the salary level went down five, is that because of somebody new and.
Yeah, lots of new.
Entry level salary?
Retiring.
Okay.
Yep.
People that were at the end of their steps and now people coming in, beginning.
What is it, Professional Services?
Professional Services is, the big item there is paying police officers for details more than the level.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay, where is that one? Professional Services.
No, Professional Services is.
Is salaries. That's like group one. So, there's always like, all the different salary, all the different payroll things, and then they group under Professional Services.
Okay.
And then down, further down, there's outside people.
I also wanted to ask, and I'm not entirely sure. How do you determine, how do you know what your maintenance costs are going to be? Do you just basically put forty thousand in that bucket and hope? And move money around if it gets worse? Is that kind of how you do it, or do you?
Yes, the mayor, and the mayor comes up.
Or do you know, or do you know based on the age of some of your things?
We know what it cost us last year. But it isn't getting any, any, any newer.
Plus ten percent.
We might, we might get a new, one new vehicle, but we still have, the rest of them are getting older. And we just take a shot at it.
And then move money around if we have your.
And then we use capital to peg for, you know, like, for the, really for the vehicles and the big things. But as you can see, in fifteen, it was twenty, and now we're up to forty. So, we're planning that.
Well, I also like your policy of putting more in reserve funds so that if somebody, Fire, DPW, anybody, has an unexpected maintenance issue, that's how we pay for it.
Right.
With that way, the money isn't tied all in DPW, then.
Or in another department.
Dave Mottler has to ask Joe if he could have some of his money. That'll never happen. So, I like that policy. Uh, moving on, anything else under Highway? Going on to Snow and Ice. We're at one fifty, no, two hundred, which is what we did last year.
Right.
And you've been feeling that's comfortable enough that you would definitely spend it, right?
Yeah, we're, we're.
That would be a really warm year.
Well, honestly though, in sixteen, we only spent a little over two sixty-seven.
That was a great year.
So, yeah. But I mean, you know, there, there is, I mean, there is no way to even predict the weather for this weekend, never mind.
What did we ha- what did we have this year, like, five, five and a half?
Five nineteen, five nineteen, four ninety-four.
Right, we just approved the transfer from three guys.
You know, but, you know, some years it's, and then we had in, in twelve, we had two oh nine. So, you know, and then one year was six forty nine, that was a really bad year.
Yeah, that was bad, yeah.
You know, yes, we all do, it was like, at home, everywhere.
We had FEMA those three years, a month ago.
Yeah, and then, right, when they declare states of emergency, sometimes we get some, you know, FEMA reimbursement. But, you know, fourteen and fifteen, we used to do a hundred and fifteen thousand. So, now we're up to two, so.
So, where, I'm curious, this is just me in accounting. When we get extra money, like this year, the money we needed to get up to five fifteen or whatever, where is that shown in the budget? Or is it just a ledger and accounting?
Do you see, do you see in the prior years, actual?
Right.
Do you see the actual spending?
Oh, six forty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
So, it takes a little bit before it gets to, like, you have two hundred and you don't have that in.
Actually Valerie already did it after you approved the, the transfer for the, for the deficit. Valerie's already put it in there and zeroed it out.
So, someone wanted to know, they could find out, but this.
Oh, yeah.
This goes back to two fifteen. So, two sixteen, we didn't have to spend any extra. So, we just don't have two seventeen yet because we just did it.
No, we did spend extra. Two sixteen, see two sixty-seven?
Right, no, that's, that's what I said.
Right.
That's all we had to spend. We don't.
There was extra, there was six seven thousand extra.
That was the year that we.
I understand, but I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. Because it wasn't six hundred thousand, I was happy.
Right, because you could see fifteen, that scary one, the six forty-nine.
I apologize, I just know that we spent five hundred some this year and it just didn't get on this report yet, that's all.
Well, because it wasn't budgeted, so this doesn't show actual yet?
It'll show it actual next year when we do this budgeting.
Correct, right.
Exactly.
Because when we run this report.
Who knows?
We haven't even done, we haven't even, we weren't even done with the, uh, snow and ice.
It might snow tomorrow.
We were getting snow up till, come on.
April first, we were with snow toes.
Oh, we had, and then we had ice after that, Joe. You know, it was mid-April, we were still doing, calling up for ice. But Valerie was very excited. She came down with her sheet showing, you know, the, everything on there, so the full amount's on there and there's zero deficit, so she came right down and showed us something beautiful.
She was happy there was no budget deficit for this year?
And to be honest, just, she sent you those monthly reports.
Oh, yeah.
It shows there.
Okay, good.
And it, the transfer to the budget, it won't show in the negative there. It's been showing in the negative for the last couple of months. So, when she sends you May, it will be.
Okay.
Little things that get exciting.
Helps you get through the day.
Yeah.
Anything else on Snow and Ice? Moving on to Streetlights, which is under the, now, the DPW pays for this?
No, that's me.
May, or you do it, right?
Yeah, the streetlights are under me, and, um, pretty much, you know, I'm thinking it's pretty flat. Again, you know, it's, we subcontract out to, we own the streetlights, you know, we've owned them for quite a few years. Um, the expenses to subcontract out, but it's still a lot, it's still beneficial that we own them. And, you know, so we purchase our, our equipment and, um, our supplies. And it's pretty flat, um, never knowing how many are going to go out and when they're out or whatever, but.
But the LEDs are saving us.
Yeah, so, but my concern with the LEDs is once they get to the age where they need to be replaced, they're a lot more expensive than, you know, than the.
But I thought they have like, three times a light bulb.
They do, but they've been up there a little bit now.
Oh.
You know?
Yeah, you never liked that.
Yeah, and then when we need to replace those, they're, they're, they're very costly, but again, you get the, a long shelf life.
And you also have a lot less electric bills.
Exactly.
Exactly.
I'm a big LED fan, I'm a lighting guy, so. All right, anything else on Streetlights? DPW Motor Repair.
Did you have some questions on Streetlights? Do you have a streetlight out there?
Yeah. So, do we, and we go to them all by now?
Yes, we have, we have, when we, we bought them all from Wimco, um, quite a while ago.
I remember that.
I would say nine, ten years ago. And then, just to let you know, people call in, they have a streetlight out, Nikki and I go out. We actually have the inventory list, we look at the pole, because they fix them during the day. So, you have to know exactly.
You bring that ladder and you go up there. You and Nikki.
No, well, I, I hold the ladder.
Well, because you.
I don't think I'll hike that.
I understand.
You know, somebody's going to think we're serious. This is big.
Well, I am serious that we do go out and we check to make, get the exact location and the pole number on it. And, um, and then we do a work order for it and we send them out to be repaired. The ones in the neighborhood are the decorative, so those don't have actual numbers, so we go by, um, house numbers as close as we can. But we check every complaint that comes in because we can't, we don't want to send people out to fix a light that's flat out because they're, they're in the day, so they're not going to know. We, last thing we want them to do is change the wrong ones.
So, you have to go out at night.
Why do we have the mayor doing this? Guess right.
Because you like doing it. Are, are you volunteering? We have a volunteer thing, so, you volunteering?
No, I just.
That means you have to go out after dark in the summer.
You're like, you could be doing something else.
To see the light that's out.
I don't want you to follow the line.
Well, it's fine, it gets us out of the office.
I don't know, just because I'm not sure if this comes with a budget at all. What line does any credits for our solar system go to?
Our solar system goes to all our departments, um, most of them, um, the high, like, it's divided in percentages between some in, some in DPW, uh, some in the, all, all different ones, like our buildings. There's a credit, the solar credits are distributed percentage-wise through many, many of our electric bills. Even though we're one entity, we get many individual bills and accounts, and they're all separated like that. Some do go to Streetlights, some go to the building ops, which is all our different buildings, and they're portioned that way.
I think we figure seventy-five thousand dollars saving when we put those in from not having them. Anything else under? I'm on Motor Repair now. How many people in Motor Repair?
Two.
And you'll see that budget is down thanks to the solar getting the credits. I thought that was.
Oh, okay, there you go, right there. Um, any other questions on Motor Repair? DPW Traffic. This is, uh, outside Professional Services?
No, this is everything inside, everything. We do our edge lines, we have to hire people, um, center lines, edge lines, we have sidewalks, crosswalks, signs.
That's what I meant, you have to hire people, right?
No, we do our crosswalks, we do our.
So, what is this?
Sweep for parts, some we do, some we contract out.
Like, the edge lines and center lines, we contract out.
So, this budget pays for those, then you have to, have to.
Plus the parts and the paint we provide ourselves.
Anything else on DPW Traffic? Anybody?
Nope.
DPW Recycling Waste? That's hazardous, like oil, stuff like that?
No, hazardous waste, we did once a year. Well, we didn't do it for a lot of years, and then we did one and we got absolutely embalmed. So, then we did one the next year, which was this past October, and it was, we didn't have a lot. So, we decided, I do it with Southampton, he and I decided we're going to go every other year. So, I wanted to take the money for this year and move it down to recycling because what I want to do is we take all our electronics and we have a dumpster guy that comes in and he sets his, and his, his prices like tripled since we started using him. So, what I'm doing now is, he's going to be gone as of June thirtieth. I'm buying a shipping container, and I'm going to try a different way of doing it. So, that's the change there, so, part of it is the shipping container.
Does somebody brings a TV and don't they have to pay for it?
Yeah, but that just goes back to the jumbo fund.
So, we thought this was a great idea. This is, um, a suggestion that came up during our budget meetings, and we thought it was a great idea. And especially, um, what Patty's trying to do is get a hold of the rising costs, and instead of paying someone to do it, if we have our own container, then we're more in control because whether it's full or not, you're paying so many pickups.
Yeah.
So, we thought this was a great idea.
So, this recycling, is it appliances or is it electronics only?
It's appliances, it's electronics, these guys do, um, light bulbs, they do, they do it.
CFLs?
ACs, they take, so everything, this is going to be, before it was, they came, they took the dumpster, and that was it. We paid one price and then we had to have it cold three times a year. This is going to be completely different. We're going to be paying per item for some things, we're going to be paying per pound for some things, so it's going to be a way different, but I think it's going to work out better, of course.
Okay. Trash Town Buildings.
That's me.
You have a lot of trash.
Yes.
So, we've been able to actually, we did go out to bid on this before, and we were extremely lucky. We, um, get a, we, we received an excellent bid on this.
Do so.
And it keeps, yes, and it keeps the prices down. And the reason some of them is excellent is because some of the buildings, um, do so does not charge for.
Yeah.
So, obviously they're, obviously their bid came in extremely lower than anybody else, which is a huge benefit to us and a, and a great service. So, we're very happy with their service.
Yeah, they've been fantastic.
Yep, so.
Can I ask, if I might? What's the savings between bids? I'm just curious if Do So didn't do that, would this budget be twenty-five thousand?
Well, it was quite a lot because I think it's the schools that they don't charge for. So, they actually, you know, when we listed, we had to list all our containers, which was quite a feat. And all, and all our, you know, all our areas where they pick up. And, um, so every, you know, the other companies that bid on it obviously had a price for each one, and when Do So's came back, the schools were zero, 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 zero.
So, we're probably saving at least ten grand here.
Saving a lot, you know?
That's important, that's huge.
It's, it's, we were, we were extremely pleased.
So, the sanitary, I'm going to Sanitary Landfill? You guys okay with trash removal? Sanitary landfill, that's just to be maintained, right?
Take care of the two landfills, make sure they're tested and reports.
Testing.
Did something happen last year that, or this year, that was a seventeen thousand dollar hit?
We had to do extra testing this past year.
I remember that.
Yep.
Sometimes the gas levels get high, and we have to put in extra wells, do different monitoring. We just rebid this this past year and things are looking a little different. They're trying to go, we're mandated by DEP, how often, we're looking at maybe being, we'll go once a year because, you know, we have to sample twice a year, so that would be a big savings, so we're still in negotiations.
Can't we sell the methane to the homeowner?
That was a regulation that came on with Patty at sixteen nine, remember? Was some, was permitting, it was something that we had to do, remember? Surveying, I remember that.
Who knows?
Yes.
So, not something we're expecting to see next year?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not.
Yes, hopefully not.
Okay.
Is the, um, cemeteries, are they under John? So, we'll wait to talk about them. So, which means, um, waiting on John, which means we can't do a motion on DPW until we talk to John. I mean, I don't think there's going to be many questions there, but it has to be pro forma. You guys agree with that?
We have Enterprise two, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I was thinking we'd skip to Enterprise, sorry, Rayma.
That's fine, it's all very interesting.
That we, you know, and you.
So, um, but that was the last, I jumped. Brookside Cemetery and Main Street Cemetery were the last items.
Yes.
Okay.
Park and Rec.
That's, that's the next thing, okay. That's under Culture Recreation. Is it?
Tree Board Works.
Tree Board is in that department.
Okay, but that's still John?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll wait on that. Um, so, let's go to Enterprise.
Torbien, the last section.
I'm on ninety-three for the first one, DPW Sewer Enterprise. Ninety-two is the breakdown of all of them. How many employees in Sewer?
Five and a half. A half is the supervisor, you have water, you have sewer, you have those.
Oh, I see.
His other half is sheltering water.
So, is it the supervisor who gets the cellphone allowance?
Supervisor and foreman in each department.
So, there will be another one in water? Because there's just, well, I was.
There's one because, yeah, only the foreman gets it in this department, and then we just pay the cellphone out of the water department for the utilities it has, okay?
Um, the other question I had was around education and training. There was a bump in sixteen and then it kind of went down, and then there's another little bump next year. So, is that like an every other year kind of training scenario?
Those must be question marks.
No, that's the training, I think he's trying to get them to do different, um, safety trainings. He's got a lot of new guys and he wants to get them extra training for safety issues.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
So, we're going up from the three to the one, so.
Miscellaneous Professional Services?
Cops.
That's cops on the roads, okay?
That's the majority of it.
Okay. It's been pretty level at twenty-five, okay? You know, other obvious jumps, do you guys have any questions on?
Protective equipment, there's a jump.
Really?
He's looking for gas meters and a tripod for lowering people, other safety issues.
Oh, yeah, that is a big jump. He's looking for safety equipment to lower people in the manhole?
Yep, there's a tripod instead of them going up and down, with ladders and. The other thing is gas meters need to go in the hole, and the gas meters all need to be calibrated.
Calibrated.
Calibrated, product.
And if somebody goes into a manhole, they, they actually need to have the harness on them with a cable and somebody on top in case something happens.
Has that been doing, happening now, or is this new?
Uh, not so much.
In the works.
Sorry I asked, but.
Yes.
I'm very happy for the safety grant.
We thought it was a great idea.
I think it's a fantastic idea. Okay. Anytime we can, you know, get the workmen's comp claim. All right. Anything else under that? I'm into Sewer Enterprise. I'm sorry. Waste Water Treatment, and that's the cellphone there, and, uh, how many employees in?
Eight. Still down one.
So, when we put them on, we did one Highway, one Water, one Sewer.
Last year.
That was your three?
Yep.
Yep. Fiscal seventeen.
What's miscellaneous Professional Services? Cops.
Um, no.
No, that, um, that one is the sludge.
Sludge is both.
Sludge costs us close to two hundred thousand dollars a year.
We had, we had our landfill open, we were hauling our sludge to the landfill, and that two hundred, that I, that mine I wasn't there. We closed landfill, we had to truck it.
Wow.
Truck it, why, there's a lot of methane in a landfill.
It's huge.
Where's the truck to?
Connecticut.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine then.
They have to burn it.
Do they burn it?
Really? Do they create energy and resell it?
I don't think they do that.
No, they're having a hard time meeting, they just had to do a big upgrade on their plant in order to meet the new DEP requirements, so their price is going up. But we're just grateful because they're the only ones who can take it.
We were worried that there was nobody that would take it.
Yeah.
Is this price current with what we're going to charge?
We're about to do it, I'm about to bid it.
So, it might go up.
We're figuring, that's why we put a little more in there, that's what we're kind of figuring.
Oh, yeah, you put.
There's extra money in there for them.
And that's the difference in the budget, it looks like everything else remaining ish.
Most everything is level, yeah, except for that. Anything else on Waste Water Enterprise? Sewer Reserve, fifteen.
That's the same that we have this year.
So, if there's a major problem, use Enterprise Stabilization to pay for it, or what do we call that?
Well, they have their reserve the same way we have our reserve.
But it's.
And that's what we were talking about earlier?
Mm-hmm.
You know? Enterprise Reserve.
Water Department, I'm on DPW Water. Everybody okay there? How many employees there?
Six and a half.
Does that increase because of steps? On the full-time regular?
So, four thousand.
Forty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Probably.
Minimal, just step increases.
Is it, are, are they unionized?
They are unionized, but right now they're going to, this does not include any, because they're going to be out of contract July one, so this does not include any.
Contractual increases.
Will be coming back after her contract.
Right. We were talking about that last night, Joe. The two contracts that are due July first are Fire and DPW.
So, this could come back, so this could change.
Would it, would it?
It will change. I, I, I don't see them asking for a zero increase.
Huh. This is just flat funded.
Yeah, so this is, you know, what it, what it is now. And.
And any contract is retroactive, even if it takes you six months to do it, it's retroactive to July.
Right, not more than two years retro.
Let's hope not.
Okay.
We were recently, um, you don't put in the budget the water meter replacements? You always ask for supplemental on those.
Capital.
Capital.
We use capital.
Meter parts, there's fifteen thousand dollars.
Right, but I mean, because you just asked for that, you don't put it in the budget, you want to do that.
Because it is a capital expense, and it's nice to have it, so, you know, we try to, actually, we try to do those every year. I think we missed one year.
It kind of went, just because it went weirdly.
Right.
I think there was a change in the guard and they were doing other things.
Right.
Remember when we just did that, Peggy, we just.
We just did them recently now, so, but we try to do those, um, capital yearly.
All right, nothing jumps out at me that's questionable. Water Reserve is fifteen.
Same.
Same as usual. I think that's it, right?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Do you, since I've got a pitch, do you expect your water and sewer fees to cover you for next year, okay?
No, for the revenue increase.
Because I was going to ask about revenues at the end of the meeting, but since you're here, that's separate revenue stream, so.
No, we're looking at. No, we're looking at an increase.
Because you need to be sustainable?
Well, we aren't pumping the water, and we, every year, we go down.
Every year you go down, why?
With the amount of water we pump.
Well, low fo, yeah, no. Mood, Mood Wells had, um, water ban, didn't they?
Now, the water ban is really nice.
That was-
State water restrictions.
We were very excited to-
What does that mean to us, though, I don't understand?
We can't pump the water, people can't water their lawns, people can't, so-
So you have to stop wells, it's not about the people not watering, you actually have to-
No, no, the people stop watering, so we can't fill them, because they're not using the water, so we-
Oh, I getcha. Light dawn's over the dawning, okay? So, they're not using as much water because of that.
Because, because of the ban.
It's a catch twenty-two, the cost is high, so they don't use as much, they have to raise the fee to keep catching up? Ouch. Do we approve your rate increase or are we- No, that's for the public works.
Board of Public Works has a period.
That's why I asked Mr. Dootas here.
What does that usually happen?
When I get it all together.
So it could be sooner, or?
We're hoping fairly soon.
So there's Paul and two other members of the Board of Public Works?
I know one.
Huh?
I know one.
Really?
He's been a great member, right?
Yeah, and, um, yeah, yes, we're very happy to have him.
You're not allowed to tell them no rate increase, Joe. All right, well, I, I had to ask, cause someone asked me, so.
Right.
Well, we didn't have one last year.
Right.
I know, so people ask, well-
And I was surprised, and honestly, if we didn't have the water ban, it would, it might have made a difference, but when DEP mandates that we put it in, we didn't have a water shortage, but we were mandated by permitting to have a water ban. So that meant, people that really love to water their lawns could not.
It's not in effect now, because I just got a new one.
It just ended.
But we're still-
I forgot to ask.
Every month, we've been down, so.
So water up.
Well, that's a good thing, we didn't raise it last year, and secondly, we raised copy taxes two and a half every year, and you guys, you would expect, as a taxpayer, that we would have to pay a little more for usage. But at least you can control that by how much you use, but, all right, okay.
Is it mandated by, I mean, it makes sense, was it mandated by the state that they eat, they sustain themselves?
Yes.
That's why it's at enterprise, exactly.
So that definition is-
Enterprise is a business, they have to- Okay. It would be, well, that'll be in the Board of Public Works announcements when you decide how much you're gonna raise. All right, I, as, we could vote on enterprise.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Make a motion, City Council Finance Committee recommend to the full council, uh, that the city rate, but, raise an appropriate sum of two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents for the various departments listed under section ten enterprises, and the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations for the following. Amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and finance subcommittee, water and sewer enterprise, two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, I don't know if you want to wait, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't vote the DPW's budget in, but, uh, we have to wait for John, we hope he's gonna be here soon. What time is it?
Uh, twenty-five of-
Oh, I thought he wouldn't be here till six, so. Um, well, Rayma wanted to talk about, I wanted to go to the library, that's the first line in cultural recreation.
Thank you very much, thank you, Paul, there's nothing to say, go, see you tomorrow.
So-
I'll come and sit at the big birthday.
Yes.
You're more than welcome, Rayma, anytime.
I don't know if you know the figures, and I'll just read them out to you, there's-
No, I, I read them, I just looked at them.
Okay, so three hundred and seven thousand was requested, which is a major increase over last year.
Which is why I'm here, actually.
And, well, you've got two oh eight, which is three thousand more than last year, so, I guess you're here to explain why you needed three oh eight?
Well, I, I've come to explain the, the library's rationale for asking for the money that we did.
Could you wait a second, so she knows, you're the president of the-
Oh, I'm Rayma Hutchinson, and I'm president of the Public Library Association, East Hampton.
I didn't know what, what, what-
No, no.
Do you know, do you know the members, do you know the members here, everybody here, Rayma?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so, go ahead.
Um, so, in the past, the library hasn't really done a lot in terms of requesting, um, money, you know, at, at the budget. There's a requirement that the city will give us so much, that will MRW. And, um, for, for many, many years, that, that was it, what, what we knew, and that's the way it went. Last year, we, um, asked for fifteen thousand dollars more, and that was, um, because we were facing a shortage, and we were going to, um, have to reduce, um, library hours, uh, staff hours. And that, you know, that was not approved, so this year, we, uh, decided that what we would do is we would start to educate, um, the city as to what it costs to run the library. And so, that number is the cost of providing the free and public library services to the citizens of East Hampton. Doesn't include building and stuff that, the, because the building, etc., is owned by the association, which is a nonprofit. Uh, but it is, does cover the cost of providing the services and all the services to public. And so, I just, I wanted just to make that clear, and not to just kinda say, well, this year, we just thought we'd ask for, like, a huge increase.
Well, what you mean, you mean, if you have full staffing hours that you've-
Right, currently, right now, that's what is, the three hundred and eight is what, um, we have budgeted and, uh, will approve in a couple of weeks.
So you cover it from?
We cover it from our investments, plus, we have, I think you may all notice, we've started to do independent fundraising. Um, we've done Valley Gives, we've done One Giving Day, we did an annual appeal, it was, you know, small. But, you know, we, we started to look outside our investments to provide, because the investment stream of income, uh, is, even though investments are rising, the actual income from the investments is not. But we, um, this year have gone to a four percent withdrawal, uh,
Of principal?
To, of, of the, uh, current, of the average of the last four quarters of the value. So it's appreciated, uh, value of the investments, which is a standard nonprofit drawdown. Um, typically, in the past, uh, with commercial bonds, etc., you've gotten enough interest flow that could be taken out, and there would still be, uh, room for growth in the investments. But, um, we, we feel as board that we need to provide at least the services that we are providing today to the citizens. Uh, and we do more if we can, and that is a constant, um, discussion of ours, as to what services and programs we can provide to the community. Because we serve the, we serve every decade of people, we serve babies, we serve teenagers, you know, we serve toddlers, we serve middle school. We go right up, you know, we're sort of like cradle to grave. And we try to-
It's probably true.
It is true, it is true, so, you know, when we're looking at what programming, what books, what resources that we want to provide to the city, that's, that's our, that's our main aim. And we find that even with, you know, eBooks and all sorts of other things, the library is always busy. We have enormous, we have our computers, which are free to the public to come in and use the internet, and, you know, check their emails, search for jobs. They are busy all the time, all the time. People are in and out of there, our children's library does an enormous amount. We have, we have classes come in from the elementary schools, uh, once we've used, you know, used the facilities, the school doesn't pay for those, I mean, we, we provide, and they let us know, kind of what, you know, what kind of books, what, what they're looking for, we try to tailor all that. So, my purpose in coming tonight is simply to explain, um, what, what the library in fact costs to run.
So, just to review, because I think this is important, you put three hundred and seven thousand dollars in your requested stage, which is an accurate figure to what it actually costs to staff the library. That's the services you're talking about.
And provide programs and books.
And, the, the mayor's increased your allotment from the city to two oh eight, but the remainder of that is funded through the nonprofits, various revenue streams.
Right.
And some of that, is that including Williston's nice little gesture, Williston?
No, that is just an internal transfer.
Okay.
So, see, it's part of the money that the city gives.
Okay, so that's-
For what we're aware of.
Okay, but that means that almost, you're providing almost ninety-nine thou, ninety-nine thousand dollars-
Yeah, right.
-in funding, and I think this, what you're here for is so the city is aware that the city of East Hampton isn't paying all of this, there's a nonprofit group of volunteers that is raising funds to keep this library open.
And I, that is true, and actually, you know, I don't think a lot of citizens in East Hampton are aware of the fact that we're-
I have to tell you, I didn't know it was that much.
Yeah, and I mean, we're not, you know, we're not putting those figures out there, and, you know what I mean? But we're, I'm here, and obviously, public record, and our, our, our stuff, you know, is available. But, um, you know, I just, I just feel that, um, if we don't start talking about what, what we're doing and, and what it costs, and what our dreams are. Right now, we've got a strategic planning committee going, you know, we're trying to look at the next five years out.
Have, who would be, have you guys as a board gone, and I know the answer's gonna be already, have you already gone back to Williston, and, I mean, net ten thousand has been ten thousand for a while, hasn't it?
Used to be twenty.
Used to be twenty.
They're going the other way.
But, we, we have broached this, we have broached this subject to, uh, Williston a few years ago, and, you know, we were told, we go in and deal with the bank. I mean, that, that's what we were told, and we, um, you know, we're sort of one of these, like, quite a quasi-public kind of people, I mean, we're not gonna go-
Name is probably where you're thinking.
I mean, I, we don't wanna go in and say, well, you know, the mayor just puts that in the amount of money that, you know.
Well, we give up, we give you exactly what they give us.
Yes, so no, right.
The exact amount goes right, you know, goes right to you, we don't, we don't, unfortunately, we keep it.
And the two hundred and eight is a formula that the state provides to cities.
That's right.
Oh, right, the city, the city has to give a certain number.
There's a formula that-
Right, allows it to survive.
That Melissa calculates, um, so that they can reach accreditation. Um, now, Rayma knows, um, I happen to be an avid library person, and, um, I totally respect what they do, I think what she's trying to do is get an awareness.
Sure.
Absolutely, cause I wasn't aware of that.
No, no, this is simply, this is simply sharing information.
Transparency of-
Right, exactly, trying to get an awareness of what their costs are. Um, I totally, um, you know, we, we've met, um, we meet regularly, and, um, I understand their request. Uh, when we were going through these budgets, you know, this is like the not-so, um, pleasant and definitely popular part of the budget, is when you make the cuts. Now, you seen last night, uh, one of the cuts off the, off the police was a hundred thousand, just off the, off the overtime budget. So, as you go through these budgets, you see how they're, they're cut in order for us to provide services across the board. And one of the things Melissa and I did do also is, you know, just comparison, um, you know, and again, you know, we're providing the part for them to get, uh, their accreditation, so that it allows them to get other grants. Um, but we just compared, like, our council on aging for, for, just, you know, using council on aging as a comparison, and to run our whole council on aging with the employees and their supplies is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So, we, in all consideration, can, you know, like, you have to make cross, cuts across the board, and where they go is where they go. And, um, the services, we very much appreciate the services of, of all, of all our departments, and, um, and also, we appreciate that the immolately Williston Public Library is here. But, um, we're able to, we feel that this is what we're able to provide, and I, I understand requesting an additional a hundred thousand, but when you're looking at our budget, I think it would be very, very difficult for any of you to find it.
Well-
Oh, and I'm not even sure you're really expecting it.
No, we did not, no, no.
And also, but I just want you to know from our end, you know, and, and also too, we've talked, um, we have spoken to, you know, um, Rayma, it's great, great to meet with, and, and the director, they're a really nice director, and we've spoken to them too about, you know, capital planning, about their capital planning for the future, and their endowments. And also, um, they have been able to utilize CPA funds in the past, and that's another source, cause, you know, they have some renovations that they're interested in. So, we pretty much have an open communication, but, um, just want to be, you know, clear where the, you know, these decisions are not made easily.
Well, and they-
It's not a matter of what anybody, you know, it'd be, in a perfect world, it'd be great to provide everything that everybody needs and, and, you know, wants and needs, but this one wasn't doable.
And I, I really just felt that, um, one of the things was it, and the other reason I made sure that I came tonight was that in the mass live story, and, you know, one of the things was library loses out or something, it was way buried in.
Well, that's what I'm gonna refer to.
Wasn't buried at all.
The perception is-
Well, in the article, it was-
Well, that's the problem, we've been having that for years with the school budget, because people would say, oh, the mayor cut the school budget, when the school budget was up three and a half percent.
Right.
You're up from prior year, uh, budgeting from the city, and unfortunately, the perception, and you're, you're, you're asking for this money so, so the people are aware, this is what it really costs, but unfortunately, it spun the wrong way, and the perception is, oh, the mayor's cutting. When your point, which I'm gonna try and make very clearly at the public hearing, um, and it's on the air here, is primarily to show what it costs, but you're funding it.
Awareness.
You're funding it from the other sources. So it's not really a cut, because it's up three thousand dollars from last year, it's one point two four percent.
I had wished the reporter would've, you know, I mean, no one reached out to me to say, you know, why is, why did you-
Well, that's because it makes good press.
No, and I, I understand that, but I just wanted to, and the other reason is that, you know, we are doing fundraising, so it, it's just like one more, so when we are out-
Well, you just did fundraising last weekend.
Yeah, and, you know, when, so, and that's just another story, our friends group provides to the library on separate monies that are not budgeted, that cannot, you know, they provide things that are not, are unable to be budgeted in our three hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. So they, they raised, did you hear, three thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, as the book says.
And those are great pieces.
I mean-
So, Rayma, we're gonna have a public hearing on this on June seventh?
Yeah.
The same thing you just told us would be good to say, you have opportunity to explain it to the public, and one of the things you might emphasize is, this is not a cut in the mayor's, the mayor is not cutting our budget. This, that's a misnomer, we wanted to demonstrate what it costs, because unfortunately, the perception is wrong. And it, it irks me when that happens, cause-
Yeah.
People are gonna think the wrong thing.
There you go.
Do you think Kathy maybe to work with you to put a word together? E-Cat? Oh, then I call it on.
Media people.
Yeah.
You know, they're those media people.
Yes, we're, we're all, you know, we have, we have kind of a small staff that's trying to do everything.
But Rayma, if you talk to Kathy, she'll put you on the air, and you can do the same thing you're doing here, you're on the air now, but, as a special event. I'm not sure how many people- It took me a while to find out where the new station was on Charter, I, and I didn't do that until I wanted to watch the school committee meeting. I didn't know where the station was, it used to be Channel Five, that's not-
Well, I, I liked it when it was five, with, what, one ninety-one, one ninety-two, and one ninety-three? Yeah.
Anyway, I, I just-
Thank you, Rayma, it's always a pleasure.
And when I was, when I was reading the mayor's budget, I'm like, oh, okay, see, I see all these columns on here, I really gotta show up and just-
Thank you.
Explain what I explained to them.
Really appreciate it, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
It's really good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rayma, have a good night.
So don't forget, you ever see anything that's raising money to the library, right?
Up there.
Up the wallets.
You know, I'm gonna call him recess, so you could try, give John his cell phone, see where he is, how he's doing.
Thanks, Rama.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Rama.
Bye, everybody, just see everybody.
We have the Memorial Day Veterans Day, I don't know who was under that, but that's nothing, that's three hundred and fifty bucks. So, the only thing we have is Park and Rec and everything under DPW that's John.
Right, and the Memorial Day, you know what that is. That's, that falls under the veterans, that's for his markers and his, and like the grave markers and flags, so...
And we can go over Main Street Cemetery.
Yeah.
Can I?
If you want.
Well, is that not under him?
It's not under him.
Oh, I apologize.
Let's do it.
If that was under Public Works someplace.
Yeah, they all fall under, it's funny how these fall under Public Works, but they do.
How do you know this so fast? You have it on memoriam?
So, is Brookside and East Street are public works, but Main Street is not?
Under Park and Rec, which falls under Park, Pub, Park and Rec falls under Public Works. And the, the, just what you just said, East Street and, and Brookside are part of the public, are part of Park and Rec's budget, so, so they, they have their employees and their laborers, they maintain them.
And Main Street isn't under...
No, Main Street's different.
Why is that? I remember asking this over the years.
We're asking, John said, he's all set.
That's good enough, thanks, anyway.
I don't, I don't wanna have to do any more work.
Yeah, they have a, they have their own, you know, their own crew and their...
So, Main Street, that's...
And actually, it's, um, not that, not that, you know, I'm sure you probably already know, but just while you're mentioning it, they use, uh, hi, are you looking for a particular meeting?
Tell me.
Yes.
What city meeting are you looking for?
I'm looking for, it said either one or the basement, it's the, um... What, ordinance? City Arts and Cultural District Subcommittee. So, it'd be downstairs, because we have this, so that basement is, just go down the steps right here.
Down there, it's the number here.
And they're not there. All right, sorry. Are you sure it's tonight? That's funny.
Okay, so, just to let you know, if you gotta go out that way, when you're outside, there's a, a glass against the wall where the elevator is, it has every meeting listed for this week. So, all you have to do is look on, you know, under Wednesday.
A directory.
And it'll tell you what's listed.
Let's see if you've got the right thing.
We have all meetings in here, but outside is just for this week.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, it'll show you what's listed for tonight.
No, no, no problem.
So, the five thousand five hundred is to pay somebody to maintain Main Street Cemetery.
So, what they do, by the way, and we use them too in different areas, they use Riverside. So, Riverside Industries, and they, they do a fantastic job of...
Just like cleaning up?
Mowing, you know, they do some of the, you know, they do that. And for us, when we were talking about trash before, they pick up all our downtown trash, they do all cottage, all of Yunglin and all of, they're excellent.
Does John use them too?
Uh, I don't think John uses them, John has his laborers. He has his laborers, we also have somebody here that works in our building, Riverside, which is great. So, they, they are an amazing asset, whatever they do, they do well.
Okay, nice.
Well, okay.
I, I feel fairly confident we can cover tree wardens.
Where is tree warden?
It's behind Main Street Cemetery. So, our tree warden is George, and he, he is a full-time Park and Rec employee. And what you see there is the cost of removing trees, which they contract out, and the overtime...
He's heading here in a few minutes, I'm sorry, Melissa, he's heading here in a few minutes.
But, that's fine.
The overtime pay is, so, George just, he spends an hour or two after his day to review a tree, or look at what needs to be done, or work with the contractors for tree removal. He just charges overtime, so you can see he's very inexpensive.
We don't do any tree maintenance on our own, we do some, but nothing major.
He does a lot.
Yeah, I mean, but when they do, like, when they cut down a group of trees, or they're basically contracts it out.
Right.
So, he, this is...
He gets bids for the, the, you know, the, the large ones that are, and with George, they gotta be dead.
So, much is done in-house, but sometimes we have to get it done.
Yeah.
Okay.
He does any of the cleanup that he can, you know, he does a lot in the park, and he does, you know, he can do trimming, but the big, huge ones that need to come down, there's a few every year, he bids, he bids them out.
They need a bucket for them.
Yeah, he bids, they're just too large, he bids them out, exactly, equipment-wise. And, but he's amazing, like, he'll catch them out, you know, after hours, helping anywhere there is.
Does he look for pests and things, like invasive species that might be killing the trees? Can he do that?
I was about him, sure.
Yes, but if you, like, we have a lot of people that just might want a tree down, and if that tree is having a specific issue and is not dead, that tree does might come down.
Okay.
George is very protective of the trees and the city, which is very...
He's been here a long time, is he getting a return?
Um, yeah, we're, we're saying no, that, that, that has been denied.
I didn't want that to happen, that's why I brought it up.
That request is not spoken about and denied upon request.
It's preemptively denied, don't even ask, it's denied.
But the answer is...
Sorry, George, you have to die every tree.
The answer is, yes, he does have a date, but it's not now.
Okay.
Not under our watch.
George is one of the old guard that just dedicated in Southeast Hampton.
That's when they're doing work in June, and he'll never come till July.
When I was, he, he seemed like an older guy when my kids were this little, and we were down the park. Really? He was a great guy, too.
July, that's, that's April and June.
Really?
You can only pay for work, fiscal, your services in the fiscal year you're in. So, what we do is like, say it's June, say it's June...
So, the only thing left on here is Brookside for John before we can do DPW?
So, we can't pay him out of July's money, we have to pay him out of the rest of the fiscal year.
I think we'll talk to John about Brookside first.
So, we hold him over.
I think, okay, any questions?
A hundred thousand for whatever, or some, you know, some of the things that are started.
If he wants to say something, I'd like to let him.
If they were doing tree work this time of year, which is the perfect time to do it, you know...
We're gonna do a five-minute recess, everybody?
They wouldn't just, you know, they wouldn't give the bill until late, so, they worried about that. They just say, you know, pause it, we have to make it a more fast.
I must've got, I got it, I was... I think we should replace the batteries, isn't it? So, we wanna do Brookside so we could approve the DPW budget, 'cause it's under there?
Yep.
Um, I have no questions, a minor increase in personnel services, probably...
How many people here?
So, one full-time year-round, that's regular salaries, is a fifty-two-week, thirty-five-hour-a-week position. The part-time regular is thirty-nine hours a week, I mean, sorry, thirty-nine weeks for thirty hours.
Okay.
So, they have a winter layout.
So, one and one.
So, one and one, yeah, so two total for the, and they cover East Street as well as Brookside here.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other questions? Any motion for the DPW budget? Public Works.
City Council Finance Committee recommends to the full council to approve and raise, to, for the city to raise and appropriate the sum of one million six hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents for the various departments listed under Section Four Public Works, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and finance subcommittee. Water, sewer enterprise, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-six cents. Sale of lots, two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. On the favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, John, now we're gonna move to recreation. Salary is, um, how many positions, is it you plus?
That's me, that's just me there. And then the, the next one underneath, full-time clerical, is one, that is Sam. She works fifty-two, she's my administrative assistant, she works fifty-two weeks out of the year, but only gets appropriated thirty-nine weeks out of the city budget. Programming budget pays for the other thirteen weeks to offset her salary.
Now, does programming, I asked you this before, programming, funding go into the general fund?
No, that's our revolving.
Your revolving?
Like, what, like, non-attack?
Camp, non-attack. Sport fees, oh, I saw, all things like that.
So, she makes more than twenty-two thousand now?
Yes. And that's only appropriated from the stock. And then the temporary positions is seven, seven positions, lifeguards.
And they're just summer positions?
Just summer, yep, those are just seasonal summer, ten to eleven weeks, in that range. But you're, anything to do with the pool is your temporary positions there.
Non-attack is all programming paid for, or anybody in that, that's hired for the camp.
Camp, yes, yeah, that's through the program, that's exactly.
All right, anything else under recreation for John? Anything you wanna add? Park department, how many people under park?
Salary, salary, the first, salaries is two people, year-round, forty hours a week. Two full-time, yep, year-round.
And the clerical?
Clerical is, um...
Minor.
Minor, that's just, yeah, that's a hundred-dollar stipend every two months for a clerical, help for, put this proceeding.
And the temp positions, that's for people to help with like ball fields and...
Yeah, so that's two thirty-nine-week, forty-hour positions, plus two twenty-nine-and-a-half-hour a week for sixteen to twenty weeks during our busy season. Usually it's college kids at that, like, at that. And then security, control booth, so, the other temporary positions are paid out of that. So, it's about ten employees every budget for that.
Okay. Which, the pool maintenance, which I know is pretty expensive, is that under here someplace?
Chemicals are in there.
Just chemicals?
Yeah.
So, any repair of the pool, that's too major to be even talked about?
Yes, yes.
Keep our fingers crossed.
And, and we use some of our program money because the camp uses the pool for two to three hours a day. They help offset some of the cost of chemicals and painting the pool and things like that.
So, the only thing you can do on a regular basis is paint some patchwork, but not the major stuff like...
Exactly.
We need a new pump, or we need a new filter.
Exactly, so, um... That would be, that'd be one of those emergency costs that come up, this is just general painting.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, exactly.
And the liner, that's...
It's concrete.
Well, it's concrete, we don't have to put a liner.
We don't have to put a liner in, but that is one of the options to, to go with a rubber membrane, which is about thirty thousand dollars.
Would that increase the life of the pool? I mean, of concrete not having water against it all?
Yeah, it would probably increase the life of the pool on that end. It would, it would definitely, but the whole, yeah, it'd be a lot more. If you're gonna go into, if you're gonna dive into that, you, you gotta dive in for some more things, you know, the filter, the, the mangering underneath.
It's just a huge asset, 'cause lost whiteboard pools.
Yes, exactly, it's definitely, and they, they do a good job making sure it gets up and running and stays clean.
Question, um...
I wanna ask you a question after the meeting.
Okay. So, the last two years, you've had to get new vehicles, it looks like, or you, no, one was the office, it looks like, right? It was an upgrade to the office?
We built a new one.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And then the pickup truck last year, or this year, if you might look at it. Do you anticipate, how are your vehicles doing? Are you anticipating?
I don't really get all the hand-me-downs.
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't anticipate us looking to grab a new vehicle in the next five to ten years.
He refused the hand-me-down this year, as you remember. John got the new one.
Yeah, so...
Got one new one.
So, yeah, I don't see us for the next, you know, 'cause...
Any big ticket items like that coming up?
Not, not with a vehicle, no. A lawnmower, something that can handle the amount of cutting that needs to be done, especially on the soccer field, they're doing it like three times a week right now, it's growing. And that's the good thing about having good fields and watering systems, is the fields look unbelievably lush, and they're, I challenge anybody in Western Mass to compare what we have here in town. But, there's a lot of maintenance and mowing that goes, that's associated with it, it's, it's...
Now, would that come from a capital cap?
That would be a capital.
Yes, and, as you remember, that's where the vehicles, free cash, capital, you know, capital, that's what we use for the vehicles, and...
I'm just happy you got a new place.
Is that lawnmower on the cap?
But, not unless he puts it on there every year.
I remember that old office building.
Yeah, it's, it was a dream.
It was bad twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Has that been torn down?
No, that's the shop, so it's been beautiful. It's been renovated inside, uh...
Really? You know, it's been... Or something?
We, we did a remediation on it, too.
So that you could get an actific permit?
So, it could be, it could be, it'd be a safe place to work, yes.
Very good.
And they did, you know, took out the sheetrock, and things like that, to get it up to...
Well, that's pretty...
So, we've been treating John nice, he got his new office, he's got a new truck, so, it's done, it was, it was past part.
Yeah.
Wow, I'm very happy John's here because we do a job.
He got two vehicles, and one though was recycled.
Yeah, one was recycled, and that was...
Anything else on the park department, do you have anything else? I think we're done, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Making motion.
I just usually hand this out every year, 'cause, uh, the revenue's that we generate.
And this is stuff that goes into the general fund, this, these?
How much of this do you get to, is applicable back to his budget? Does it all go to your bottom line then?
It all helps offset the expense costs, yeah.
Well, yeah, it goes into the general fund as revenue stream, right, Melissa, am I reading it right?
Yeah, that's what he says down the line, just over to the city, that means, means general fund.
The ones that don't are the ones you just talked about before, like the, like the camp.
The camp, and some of the sports programs, and things like that, yeah. Field rentals, things like that. We use that money to offset other costs that are associated with the park.
And people have asked in the past, too, John, and I know John's answered that, you know, why do you not charge for the park all week long? Well, because it's, it's not cost-effective. It would cost more to have somebody there to charge people, you know, something.
To collect money at the gate.
The five people that go and whatever.
Yeah, so during the week, during the week, it's usually parked past people, it's our regulars.
Yeah.
So, you know, they have one on the weekend already, yeah, so that, there, there's not a huge influx of out-of-town three-dollar charges during the week. On the weekend, it's definitely, it's definitely worth it, it's a decent revenue stream.
And people also ask why we don't charge more for out-of-towners than we do in-towners, and that's because when you receive grants...
Yeah, you gotta be careful on, on what you charge.
Then you gotta ask everybody, you're gonna ask the guy to look for an ID, that's not a good thing.
Exactly, then you get the lines backed up even worse.
You see, but you see communities that do that, you know, residents are less than...
We'd always be open if there's someone had a great idea to make it easier for residents to pay less or be identified, but, so that...
We don't charge that.
No, it's only three dollars, and the park season passes only twenty-four dollars for the year.
I mean, come on.
Unbelievable.
And it's the, probably the most gorgeous park in the, in the northeast, I must've, I got, I can't believe it, it's beautiful.
Look is like center of town or something.
And there's, um, also, a discount if you do both your vehicles, like, you know, for people that, you know, have your teams, and, you know, I remember, I remember me, we'd get a, you get a discount off the second car.
Yeah, so it'd be thirty-six, thirty-six for two.
You know?
This is, this is...
I just made all my kids walk, I wasn't gonna...
This is, I, this is, it's too bad we're on air, maybe I'll ask you afterward, but I'm, I'm kind of curious.
So, you're gonna ask it anywhere?
I am, 'cause, whatever. There's no, how do I put this? The demand for the cemetery is, is, do you get, do you get the fees for burial as well?
You have to buy the plot, don't you?
So, the, the way it works is the burial fees are, and that's what's included in there, and then any sales, fifty percent of the sale goes into perpetual care account, which goes for long-term maintenance, and the other fifty goes to the city.
So, when someone buys a plot?
Fifteen was a big year.
Yeah.
I wasn't...
Buying a lot of plots.
And that, someone buys a plot, yeah.
So, we're, yeah, so we're advertising as soon as the, the other section that's opened up.
It's gonna go crazy.
So, we'll have more, we'll have more opportunities.
Do you wanna die, you're not a park!
Right, not now.
So, yeah, we, we are gonna have, we should see an influx for this coming year and next.
We got...
Sadly. Can we do a motion now?
We can, I make a motion.
Do you have any more questions on deaf people, you know, deaf people?
I make a motion, the City Council Finance Committee recommended the full council that the city raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents the sum of five hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents to the various departments listed under Section Six. Cultural and recreation in the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amount to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and Finance Subcommittee. Emily Williston Library Donation Account, ten thousand dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Before I leave us all, I just wanna check on revenues. It looks great. We're, we're up the two and a half percent. Is why we're up in, in anything here that of any concern to you, Mayor Kedden and Melissa? Cherry Sheet, we're only up two hundred and forty, so.
Those were the estimates we had at the time, so.
Do you expect, we don't expect a, a cut, do we?
I hope not. You, you know, the one thing that, you know, that I always really, really hope never happens again is mid-year cuts. Those are the absolute worst. You know, it did happen one time in there and, and, and that's, that's very difficult for us. But obviously, it's difficult for everybody. But, you know, the numbers, they might change a little bit, but, you know, we have to base them on what, you know, when they first, what they were when they came out, when we get the cherry sheet, that's what they're based on.